Need to order, I'd like to call the meeting of the Centerville Board of Education for Monday, August 24, 2020. Order, call the roll please.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Here.
Dr. Rohr, I don't see him yet, but we'll look for him. Mr. Schreier?
Here.
Megan Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Doll?
Here. Next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand to be in pledge of allegiance.
I do see Dr. Rohr, too.
Cool.
Hi, Dave. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
The United States of America- To the Republic- For which it stands, one nation, under our indivisible liberty and justice for all. Everyone be seated. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda as presented, and you should have received recently the change that added an executive session as item 13. So that was the one we approved as presented. So we need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Doll?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Hearing of the Public. Board of Education provides this as an opportunity for the public comment before any official action is taken. We ask in just a second for people to address the board. Adult speakers are requested to give their name and address. Those who are minors do only give their name. Since we're going to have this by Zoom, I'm assuming that Swan has this already set up, and we'll call on them in just a second. The board will listen. For those who speak, please keep your comments to more than three minutes, and any questions you have, we will refer to the superintendent. Swan?
All right, we're ready to go. Can they? You see yourself?
Yep, I can see him.
Great.
Ready to go now?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, my name is Greg Kerr. I live at 900 East Whip Road in Centerville. I want to thank the board for allowing me to come today real quick. I've got 10 quick points. It shouldn't take about three minutes, so we should be fine. Some of the things I wanted to bring up are obviously in regards to the kids going back to school and COVID and everything as far as that goes. Those are kind of the main points. Number one, I'm hoping that the Centerville School Board is aware that the CDC does recommend that kids do return back to school. Number two, I wanted to make sure the board was aware and had the understanding that just recently Montgomery County Department of Health recommends that kids be in school in person or in class. They are okay with either way. It's unhealthy for these kids not to be in school, and the byproduct is obviously much worse and consequences that could happen by this potential COVID than kids getting it with other things that are going on. I did send both of those links to Mr. Henderson via email this afternoon, so that if anybody has a question where those came from, that's where it came from. By the end of this week, Friday, Ohio will have 2 million people tested. Out of that tested population, from 0 to 20 years old, there's a half of a percent, a 0.54%, that somebody is going to test positive. This is not really affecting children as much as people are saying. And honestly, if you go all the way up to the age 30, there's not that big of an effect at all. There's only been two deaths this year so far, in 20 and under, and if you go all the way up to 30, that's only been 15 deaths all year. Obviously, every death is tragic, but in Ohio, we have 120,000 fatalities a year for various reasons. Two does not seem a lot. I want to make sure the board members are aware that currently the governor right now has put no restrictions on them at all, other than the mask mandate, which is statewide. There's recommendations out there, but there's no restrictions, and obviously there's other school systems out there that are at least making an effort and attempt to try to get the kids in person. Something I did want to ask was, the board sent out a survey of 5,000 people a while back. The last in-person meeting, the board was asked about the results of those, and we haven't seen anything like that come across yet. So I'm wondering if the board's willing to share the survey results since it was anonymous, at least a breakdown to let us know what percentage of the parents and what they believed in, what the children believed in, and what the teachers believed in. I think it's fair to ask that since it was an anonymous survey. Wanted to know, when the decision was made to go not in person and online only, did the board actually vote on that direction, and according to the board bylaws, were those votes taken, were they recorded, and are they available in your notes, in your meeting notes, so that we can see who voted what? Does the board have a plan to get us back into school in person? I mean, it's okay to say we're not, but what's the plan to get us there? It's okay to have a plan, and we can get derailed, but at least we need to have a plan out there, and what is a plan? And what is the threshold that Centerville needs to hit so that these decisions of the board members can change to get these kids back in school? In the last in-person meeting that we had over at the high school, there were 13 people that stood up and talked. 10 of them were about this subject. Three of them were not. Out of the 10 that stood up, nine of those people passionately with the board to get the kids in school permanently, full-time, and it seems like we're just not getting anywhere with the board right now. I have expressed my concerns about the board not following bylaws to Mr. Henderson via email, and I'll tell you what, number nine on here is a positive thing. He's indeed done a good job returning my emails back. I hope that continues in the future. And then the last thing to wrap up, and this is a little tough one here, but according to Ohio Revised Code 705.92, the community only needs 15% of the number of people who voted in the last board election to sign a petition to have a removal of a board member that does not represent the will of the people. When that petition threshold is hit, that member has five days to step down from their position or they can fight for it. A person can run for that position, a majority wins, and you've got 20 days or longer to rerun that. So I guess my biggest question is, the board's going to continue to not follow the will of the people that hired them or represented them and elected them. Will that board member graciously leave their position and not cause any more harm to the people that elected them? And/or will they go ahead and try to fight for that position and cause continued fighting for the position that they only currently held? So those are my couple of questions. Y'all will talk about later on, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I guess I see myself. I'm sorry, I can't get up. Hello, my name is Frederick Decker. I live at 191 Southbrook Drive here in Dayton. My family and I, we moved to Dayton for the school district. Centerville for the school district. That was about 10 years ago, and it was L Pride, and that's what we wanted to be part of. I've been very outspoken in my position that schools should be open this year. I did not care for the process. I did not feel it was transparency or answers from the board. I'm working past this decision. We've started the school year, and I want this to be the best year for everyone involved. But at this point, I think it's important that we talk about the next step, and that has to be to open our schools. There's just, yes, the pandemic is, well, it's not a pandemic anymore, but this situation is unprecedented. We understand that. But now we're at the point where we have to find a solution. Reassessing, you know, reevaluating, that's just not, it's not acceptable. All small businesses who rely on their work to make a living, they have found a solution. They created sneeze guards. They created walls. We've adapted for all of our favorite foods, but somehow, for the education of our children, we cannot adapt. I know you guys care about the kids. I know that's why you're there. So what can we do to find a solution? I think there's no savior. Nobody's going to come and find a solution for us. We have to be the solution, our community and you guys and the board. L Pride is relying on that community to help you solve the problems. Imagine who we could be if, by the end of this, we're the leader in adapting. We can do it. Not you alone, but you have the community's support. I ask you to do your best and to come up not with perfect solutions, but with opportunities. Opportunities to open our schools, get our kids away from screens, and learn, because despite your best effort, online learning, let me just say, that was our first day, it's not fun. It's not fun for the kids to be staring at a computer all day long, to be on a chair by themselves, with the parents breathing over their shoulder because they want to make sure that everything they're doing is the right thing. So thank you for your hard work, but I think you can do better. I know you can do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Henderson, is that the last one as far as you know?
Yes, Mr. Doll, there was just two, two lengthy speakers.
Next item on our agenda is Board and Administrative Reports. I understand from Ms. Sparks that we do not have a legislative report. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And are we having a report from the student board reps?
I don't believe, where Grace go, Grace, I don't believe so, right? No report from them either.
Okay, great. Next item is the Treasures Report, and then Superintendent's Report, the Treasures Report.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can see my screen. This will be brief. I wanted to give you an update on where we are with the bond refunding. So just as a refresher, you saw this exact slide back in July when we talked about refunding. We had the opportunity, it's past tense now, but we had the opportunity to refinance our debt, basically similar to refinancing your home. And what this will do is it will save interest dollars that are paid by the taxpayers for our outstanding debt. We need to change our mind frame here. We're not talking at all about the general fund. We're only talking about the debt and the money that we receive from taxes that is specifically for paying that debt off. And so it's completely separate from anything we do in terms of our daily operations. So again, the history of this debt, the original issue was issued back in 2005 at 4.82%. It was refunded or refinanced, is another word for that, in 2012 at 3.88%. And there was savings back then of about $5.3 million in savings over the life of the debt at the time. So the pricing for the 2020 refunded bonds happened this past Thursday, August 20. We refinanced just over $37 million worth of bonds and achieved lower interest rates on all of those bonds. And our new rate on average is 1.61%. So the market was so much in our favor that we're saving an additional over 2% of $4.5 million in interest dollars through 2033 that we will not have to pay because we were able to get better interest rates. That savings amounts to about 11.6%. Everything we were able to do was, I talked a little bit about this before, but we were able to restructure the payment schedule and how those payments are made. With doing that and with using some excess funds that we had built up into our debt service fund, the millage on this debt will remain constant throughout the life of the bonds. And I can show you a little bit of a picture on what that means. So the blue line, the top line, is based on just some estimates and what our property value will do over the next almost 13 years. That was what the millage was going to have to do for this issue. It was going to grow a little bit in order to make all the bond payments. But again, we restructured some things. We got such great savings in the interest rate that we're able to level that off, and we should not see any kind of increase. And this is an estimate, but we shouldn't see any kind of increase in our bond millage in the years to come. So this was a very successful deal. Like I said, we won't see it in our operations, but I'm happy that we had this opportunity. I'm really happy that we could take advantage of the market. Taxpayers.
Great job, Laura. Is that all you have at this time?
It is, yes. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question regarding that graph. So the millage remains the same. When you say that, you're talking about the millage rate?
Yes.
So as the property value increases, we're not collecting more funds on that? Is that the rate is remaining the same?
For bonds, we actually do. The bonds are taxed at the full rate, yes.
Okay. So that's why under a normal that's why that blue line under the original series would be increasing so incrementally?
That actually is like that because of the way the payments were structured. The payments were growing over time, and they were getting a little bit more each year. We were able to flatten that and flatten that curve and make it to where our payments are not escalating over the years. So again, we don't have to increase the bond millage. If our property values continue to grow at the rate they have over the last several years, that green line actually might dip downward. We might actually be able to decrease the millage. That would be the best case scenario. And that may happen if, like I said, if we were conservative when we calculate these things. And so if our community continues to grow in terms of property value, that line actually might go down, which would be even better. So, but we won't know that. It'll take a lot of time, you know, years for us to know if that'll happen or not.
And we would really only know that in retrospect, right? We're not going to be able to foresee the growth in the property values.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So when we talk about savings to the taxpayer, it's not that the taxpayer's bill will necessarily be going down, but it's going to be leveled off, whereas under the previous structure, it would not have been.
Well, we're not going to collect $4.5 million over the next 13. It's a long time, and so it's really spaced out. And so in your individual bill, Allison, you maybe wouldn't notice much of a difference. But again, it is $4.5 million in interest that we don't have to pay out in payments over the next 13 years.
Wonderful. And this is even, the set rate that we got on Wednesday, I believe it was, was even better than the best-case scenario from when we spoke last week. Is that correct?
It was, yes. It was a really, really great day in the market, so we were fortunate.
Awesome.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Laura. Great job, as we've said. Hard work, I know, but we really appreciate all your work you did on that and your whole team.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Reports. Dr. Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Doll. Last Monday at our work session, we had two, I think, very good reports from our Curriculum Department, where Adam Trello and Cherie Colby presented. And then secondly, following right behind there was Tammy Dearup, who talked a little bit about Student Services. So last week, we completed a week-long training with our staff. Everybody reported back under contract last Monday, and obviously, we kicked off the school year today. So I'm going to turn it over to Adam and Cherie, and then Tammy will tag on at the very end and talk a little bit about Student Services as well.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Good evening. We wanted to give a quick update about the start of the 2020-2021 school year.
So as we plan for our return to school this summer, and we're looking at a blended model and then into a remote model, we looked at a lot of feedback from parents, students, teachers, and our administrators. We also spent quite a bit of time looking at information from experts. And as we looked at that information, we noticed that there were basically four major themes that were emerging for these types of returns to school. One, we wanted to make sure that we built a framework for our return that allowed us to build connections and community within our buildings and within our classrooms. We wanted to create positive routines and habits for our students and our staff. We wanted to provide accessibility to our staff. This was a major piece of feedback from our parent community, you know, that students would have that ability to ask questions beyond, you know, have opportunity to see their teachers and work with them directly. And then lastly, we wanted to make sure that whatever we created provided opportunities for support within that framework for all of our learners, including some of our students that need some more intervention and small group work.
And so at the primary and elementary levels, Google Classroom is the hub of our virtual classrooms, and all of our learning activities, lessons, videos, resources, will be posted in those Google classrooms. We have consistent daily schedules that are going to provide some structure and that access to our teachers for our students every day as they learn and grow. The social-emotional well-being of our students is of utmost importance, and that's why at the elementary, we're beginning every day with a morning meeting live via Zoom. And this is setting aside time to build those relationships that are so important to learning and to establish these routines for our students. And as the school year begins, just like in person, our teachers are spending time with the students, building that community, and getting to know one another. It is a little bit more complicated in this situation, but this time will also be used in the morning to make sure the students know what they need to do for the day and are set with the expectations for learning. There also are learning blocks within our day, and within those learning blocks, we will be delivering live instruction. We will share instructional videos and provide learning activities. We'll spend time meeting one-on-one with students or in small groups to support their guided practice and independent work. Some of this time will be live via Zoom, but other parts of it are going to be where students are working on their own, following up on activities that maybe they started together with their teacher. The teachers will balance these blocks based on the ages of the students and the needs and what they're teaching at the time and what the students need. And so we know that at elementary, particularly in the K-5 realm, that due-to-daycare situations, not all families are available during the school day. And so anything that we do live instruction-wise, we will have videos posted so that students who need to watch that or work on it in the evenings would be able to do that. Art music and PE are also integrated into the day, and those are going to be asynchronous. So that means that students and families can do those at times that are available to them. So if that doesn't work into their normal daily routine, they can complete those offline and at other times to do that. And those teachers are going to also offer Zoom office hours so that it's another staff member that students can connect with and really worry about that social-emotional piece and get back in touch with some people they haven't seen for a while.
And at the secondary level, we are also using Google Classroom for our teachers to organize communications about assignments and the happenings of their class. We have worked with our teachers in the training that Dr. Henderson mentioned to try to streamline that experience for students. Unlike the elementary level, you know, students at the secondary level are going, traveling to multiple classrooms. So we wanted to make sure that we tried to streamline that experience for students and parents. And students will be participating in a familiar schedule to secondary students. They're starting each period every day with their teachers and beginning that period by connecting virtually. We want to make sure that we message out, too, that the expectation isn't that we would have students on there all period every day, but that it would provide that opportunity, that touch point for the teacher and the students to connect. If the teacher has some direct instruction or an activity to do, they could do that, but then they could let the students go if there wasn't a need for that instruction. We feel that that provides additional opportunities for maybe individual conferencing or small group intervention with our teachers and intervention specialists tagging in on that. And so again, just bringing this back to creating a schedule, we looked at a number of different schedules, but creating a schedule that allows our teachers and our students to connect, have a similar routine, a familiar routine, and then providing access and support within that framework.
And so unlike the closure in the spring, we are required to take daily attendance and mirror what we would normally do. So at the pre-K-5 level, attendance is taken once a day, and at the middle and high school level, the attendance is taken by period. And so students will be marked present for the day of learning by attending a live Zoom or by logging into Google Classroom and completing some prompts or work in there, or by submitting completed work. And so there are multiple ways that they can be in attendance in that time, but we are taking attendance different than we did in the spring.
And I should also repeat what Ms. Colby said about, at the secondary level, we will also be recording direct instruction for students who may not be able to attend during their class period times. And as she mentioned, you know, there's an opportunity for them to engage with their classroom outside of those regular times and have access to that learning. But when it comes to grading, we are returning to our standard, let's call it pre-COVID, grading policies and procedures that we're going to have due dates and assignments due at certain times. We also understand that, you know, we aren't fully back to normal. Not everyone experiences the same schedule at home. And so we're working, we'll work with families and teachers and students on an individual basis to make sure that we're delivering that policy in a way that's fair and equitable for all of our students.
There was a different kind of buzz in our buildings this morning as we all went around and interacted with teachers as they were excited to see their students. And it was great to hear the students' voices, even though we couldn't necessarily see them in person. But we know that this school year presents a number of challenges for everyone, but we're committed to re-engaging students in their learning and moving them forward. And we will continue to have conversations and gather feedback from students, parents, and teachers as we monitor the engagement of our learners and work to adjust and adapt in this unique time in education and in our country.
Any questions? Nope, not seeing any.
I have one question. I know that there's been a lot of talk about easing back into things because of the long break. You know, we're not just talking about summer slide. We're talking about a five-month break from being in the buildings and being there for group discussion and whatnot. At what point do you anticipate, or at what point is the goal to be up to speed on rigor and more normal in that regard? Is it while we're in the virtual learning environment, when we return? Has that goal been set? Has that been discussed?
Every school year has a gradual increase of, you know, the first day of school never is as academic and busy as a day in January, right? It just gets there. And so it depends really on the age level, how much review or repetition happens in that first few weeks of school. And so, you know, our goal is to follow the needs of our children and make sure that we're not overwhelming them and working our way up. But I don't know that we have a set timeframe on that, but we're not waiting until we're back in person. I can assure that. It would be different in first grade than in fifth grade, and again, different when you've got into middle and high school as well.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cherie Henderson. Next, we're going to turn it over to Tammy Dearup to kind of tag on to Cherie and Adam's report and talk a little bit about Student Services and Special Education.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Henderson and the board. I just want to talk a little bit about Special Education and Student Services, what is going on. We worked with a group of our teachers and our coordinators and our school psychs to come up with a plan to help our students, along with curriculum, get back into the classroom. We have some students, Special Education, it's important to realize that Special Education is not separate from curriculum and instruction. So we are actually an enhancement to help our students who have a disability- to help our students who have a disability have equal access to curriculum and instruction. Much like general education, this does not look the same for all of our students who have a disability. Most of our students will actually receive their services like they would if we were in a traditional setting. So they will participate in their teachers' Google classrooms. They will get some additional support and interventions during those times. We do have a population of students, though, that receive their education traditionally in what is considered a low-incidence structured resource room. Those are students who typically receive their they are learning on extended standards, and for the most part, they are alternately assessed. So those students, as we know, have a difficult time accessing instruction via the computer. So we came up with a plan based on the feedback from our parents and our teachers and our coordinators to have those students come in remote or come in person. We're offering four days a week, and they are half-day sessions. So in those sessions, they will be working on specially-designed instruction focusing on IEP goals and and objectives. Our related services staffs or OTPT speech and APE, which is adaptive physical education, will have the option of in-person. They might do some teletherapy, or they might do a combination of those services. We did have a group of students or parents that decided to keep their kids 100% remote, even though those are also still the students that are typically in our low-incidence structured classrooms. And we have worked it out. So we have three teachers providing that remote instruction. We have one that is covering the high school level. We have one that will be covering our super seniors who attend ITOPS. And then we also have one that is covering our elementary, so our P our primary villages all the way through eighth grade. And those students will actually remain with their traditional assigned class. So they will remain with intervention specialists that they would have if they were in-person. Their remote intervention specialist is collaborating with that case manager and has access to those Google classrooms. So we can keep those relationships and that community going. It's very important for our students to have that consistency, and many most of these students have the same intervention specialist for two to three years, sometimes a little bit longer than that. So making sure that they are having the that consistency is extremely important and that they are able to see some of their peers that have chosen to come in person. They will also have some days to interact with their peers that are in person. So right now, we're really working to make sure that we're we're covering every base that we can for our students. Again, focusing on that relationship and the collaboration and using the data that we gathered from the spring on whether students were able to make progress or maintain skills while in this remote session. Any questions?
Tammy, I have I have one. Tammy, how is the staff reacting to the in-person?
Thank you for asking. It was absolutely wonderful today, actually. I made it to almost every one of our buildings. I have I have three classes to visit tomorrow that I was not able to make it to today. But everyone was really happy. We have personal, we have the PPE and all of our buildings for our staff. Our staff have been trained on that and how to wear it when it is appropriate. And they were just excited to have their students in. It was really nice to see our students were there and our students had their face mask on. We have a few that aren't quite adjusted to wearing their face mask and a couple of them, you know, would hold their face mask up and then put it down and hold it up and put it down. But we knew that was going to happen. So there was a lot of positive energy in the building today and and all of the buildings, and it was it was just great to open up that way.
Report. Thank you. Any other questions?
No. John, before we move on to the Treasurers, can I just say something? Just just as a follow-up, again, also to one of the first speaker that came tonight. I I think it's important for everyone to know, and I think everyone would agree. Everyone on the board, the administrators and teachers, our goal is to get kids back to school. And I think that's something that's pretty obvious. We all want that to be, and we want it to be. I I just wanted to clarify, you know, when when the gentleman was talking about two deaths, I believe he was referring to maybe the state of Ohio. In the country, there have been close to 100 pediatric deaths. And and I for one will never accept even one death. So to to imply that two deaths isn't as bad as 100 deaths, I just, I think is not the way we as a district could want to follow that. I do also want to say, and and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but this decision to go remote for this first quarter was was something that every one of the board members was in agreement with and and supported. And if I'm wrong, I would love for anyone to to, you know, say so, and if they feel differently, that's fine. But this was a unanimous decision, I think. And it was a recommendation from our superintendent in terms of getting back and when and what the objectives will be. I think, again, we and the administration will take this on a daily basis and see what's happening. And again, our goal is to get kids back in the classroom. We know that's the best situation and the and the best way to go. I am thrilled, Tammy, that we're able to get our special needs kids in class and get the services provided, because I know that was an important thing that a lot of the people that came and talked about were interested in doing and making sure we could provide those services. So again, I'm thrilled we're doing that. But again, I just I just wanted to be known out there that this this was not an independent decision.
I think we all spoke at the board meeting that it was 100% supported. I don't think that's a question, frankly. Also, Dave, I read in the paper, of course, not everything is right in the paper, that since July, there have been like 10,000 youth positive tests.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's true. And and again, these numbers are going up, and we talk about 100 deaths across country. We have to also realize that this is during a period where the kids were not even back in school. They weren't together. They were being isolated at home and away from people. So I think the concern, not just of me or anyone else, but everyone, is that will these numbers go up? And we hope to God that it doesn't go up. But again, these these are factors that are happening. The reality is, we are seeing numbers going up. It's not just me telling people that the numbers are going up. This is a fact. I mean, they just are.
And some of the school districts have, around the country and in Ohio, have experienced that.
Right.
Okay, Treasurers, recommendations. Everyone ready for that?
Yep.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the July 2020 financial statements, including the monthly financial report, fun activity report, appropriations, general fund spending report, general fund summary, general fund summary comparison, POs, purchase orders included included in statement number seven approved by administration, then and now certified by the treasurer, supported by the board resolution totaling $245,374.41. All that information was found in the packet that we received prior to this meeting. Motion, please.
So moved.
Got it.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Need a motion to consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings. July 27, 2020, regular meeting. August 5, 2020, special meeting. August 17, 2020, special meeting work session. Need a motion, please.
Second. Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. We're going to take A, B, C, D, D1, and E together and and come back and get D2 and D3. So superintendent recommendations, superintendent recommends accepting the resignations listed on Schedule A. Superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change in contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries programs on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries programs on the effective dates given. And the superintendent recommends the employment of personnel listed on schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts and extra duty assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. D2, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D2 for the supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. Need a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
abstain. D3, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D3 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
abstain, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Consider approving Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council resolution for the purchase of school buses. Whereas the Centerville City School Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of one or more school buses. Therefore, be it resolved, the Centerville Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of five school buses. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Just to be clear, we discussed this at our last meeting. This does not require us to purchase any buses. It just gets the bid out there in case we decide to do so sometime in the spring, as I understand it. Is that correct, Mr. Resney?
That's that's correct, Mr. Dahl.
It's correct, yes. We're not obligated. We just have to have a resolution to purchase either one, the minimum of one bus, because all buses have to be bid out to be purchased.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Pretend, consider approving the acceptance of transportation responsibilities for the 2020-21 school year from school districts and for the students listed. The names aren't listed for privacy concerns. And number 11, consider approving transportation services with Senior Assistance, Inc. for the 2020 fall semester for the no names for the same reason.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Consider approving the 2020-21 test security procedures required by the Higher Rights Code and Administrative Code 3301-13-01. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. And pursuant to Ohio Revos Section 121.22G1, need a motion for the board to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of employee of the school district. No other business will be conducted except to come out of executive session to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Henderson, you will need to stay just for maybe a few minutes, but everyone else can depart after we go into executive session.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Shannon or Mr. Morgan will put us into a separate room, a breakout room shortly, and then we'll get started. Thanks, everybody.